If everyone could take their seats, please.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We're back from executive session. I assume we're on camera and streaming. Thank you very much. I will go to board correspondence and project graduation funding. I think everyone received a letter. I don't know if that's going to be discussed in operations or not at all, so...
It already was discussed in operations.
Right, but when you do your presentation...
Yes, it'll be discussed.
So would you agree that it would be appropriate to leave that discussion for that time period?
Yes.
Excellent. That's what I was hoping to hear. So now it's Dr. Jewett's time for superintendent's comments.
Thank you. I do just want to speak to the resolutions for revisions to this year's and next year's calendar that are on the agenda. If you recall, earlier this year, we had approved a revision to the current year's calendar to accommodate the new federal and state holiday of Juneteenth, so we are ending the school year day earlier. So in order to do the same thing next year, the beginning of school next year for that first week, we had teachers reporting Tuesday, Wednesday, students reporting Thursday, Friday. So I met with the WHRA leadership to ask them if they wanted the additional day that week to be a student day or a teacher day. I told them that I would go with their preference if I was able to in making the calendar modification. And so they met with their executive board and came back to me that they would like an additional PD day that week. So you'll see on the calendar revision that we now have three teacher PD days prior to students returning. And one of the teacher PD days in October is going to become a regular school day. And then the other, just minor modification on both this year's calendar and next year's calendar is in regard to the fact that we are, we had mentioned back in the fall through the Ed Committee report that we are not having formal final exams in the traditional sense anymore. And so we've actually taken that weighting out of the grade, and so each marking period is worth 25% of the grade. So we're adjusting that last week of school schedule a little bit because instruction will actually continue up until the day before graduation. So in order to make that schedule work, we are just changing one more full day for students to a half day for students, or an early dismissal, to accommodate the scheduling. Teachers are able to give assessments during those days if they want to, and we're actually arranging a schedule so that a student wouldn't have any more than two assessments on a given day, but those can only count towards the fourth marking period grade. So we have made that adjustment. So that's why you'll see both calendars on there for approval tonight with those minor revisions. So I just wanted to explain that. And I'm going to save the rest of my comments for the honorees that we will be speaking of in a little bit. So thank you, and welcome to our student rep. It's very nice to have you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jewett. For my comments, for those of you who don't know, this will be my last board meeting. I've been on the high school board now. This will be my ninth year after seven years on the K through eight board. And it's a bittersweet time for me. I very much enjoyed serving the community and appreciate, over the years, the community engagement that I've seen. I also appreciate the collaboration of our students, parents, faculty, administration in many of our endeavors, including our strategic plan. And this has been a great honor to serve our community for such a long period of time. Finally, I'd like to thank my fellow board members. It's really been a privilege to serve alongside of you. All of you are very professional, engaged, and really care deeply about the school and our students. For that, I'm grateful, and I know that our board is in great hands going forward. So I thank you very much, all of you, for your lengthy service. And with that, I will pass it on to Mr. Sties for his business administrator comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two things. First thing is, we did have an evacuation, emergency evacuation drill, semi-annual drill. It was done here at the high school, in the South Building lot, about 40 routes. And it went well, supervised, and this time I can actually say her name, Janice Ortiz. My former transportation person had a tough name to say. I purposely hearted now. I did not. Sorry. Beth will kill me if I say that. So yeah, no, but it went very well. And my other thing is, I do want to speak out of turn, but I do want to thank Dr. Shabowski and Barry Hunsinger for the amazing support of the district and for your commitment. You guys were just phenomenal. And I will miss you, and I know everyone here will say the same. But thank you. That's all I got.
Our student comments. Mr. Bernberg, would you mind passing the microphone? Thanks.
Student achievements. The math team defeated Brexville-Broadrew Heights in round two of the Areat Challenge. The team will advance to round three against the Developing Virtue Secondary School girls division. The team had a perfect record after two rounds of the New Jersey Math League. The team is number one in the country and state. We have six students with perfect scores. The team had, excuse me, the Joy Prescott Humanitarian Award for Student Leadership and Education for Keene University is presented annually to a student leader committed to human rights and the pursuit of social justice from the Council on Global Education. Oh, thank you. Sorry about that.
I know it's old fashioned, but I figured it might be easier to read.
At least I came prepared.
You did.
The Joy Prescott Humanitarian Award for Student Leadership and Education from Keene University is presented annually to a student leader committed to human rights and the pursuit of social justice from the Council on Global Education and citizenship from Keene University. Congratulations to senior Reagan Miller, the 2021 award recipient.
Reagan, do you want to stand up?
Glow Club's food drive was an incredible success. The club made a donation to the food pantry on November 23rd with 820 pounds of food. The Script and Q Club put on four outstanding performances on the Pulitzer Prize-winning comedy, You Can't Take It With You. The performances not only provide excellent entertainment to parents, families, faculty, and students, but also impart a wonderful story about pursuing your passion instead of spending time concerned with material wealth. Congratulations to Mr. Lynch and the entire cast and crew. In honor of National Diabetes Month, the Future Health Professionals Club invited an endocrinologist, Dr. Mina Murthy, to come and speak with our students. Dr. Murthy is an endocrinology, diabetes, and metabolism specialist in New Brunswick, and has over 42 years of experience in her medical field. Athletics update. Our winter athletics program is fully underway, and basketball, wrestling, and fencing teams prepare for their first scrimmage this week. Our ice hockey, bowling, competition cheer, and swim teams have had a great start to their seasons. Ice hockey, 2-0. This team is enjoying a successful competitive start to their season as Coach Desco leads his team in his fifth season as head coach. Swimming, 1-0. Coach Hawk, Coach Tilinski, and their teams are ramping up for an exciting season after this year's virtual only meets. The season's opener at Phillipsburg was a win for the Warriors. Congratulations to junior Lucas Standridge, who broke Wachong Hills' 500 free record with a time of 5 minutes, 6 seconds, 28. Bowling, 1-0. Opening season has taken home the top three spot in the tournament. The team also won their first match. Coaches Kruger and Rico, Rito, are opening for a competitive and successful season. The competitive cheers team, led by Coach Martio, continues to hone their skills as they compete in a number of competitions. The winter cheer team, with Coach Spina at the helm, is training hard as they prepare to lead us into cheering on our Warrior basketball and wrestling teams this season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? You're welcome to leave if you would like. Thank you so much. We've got two sets of recognitions that Dr. Jewett will present to us, and then a little bit out of order of our agenda, we'll then move to our first public commentary. If you would like to start with recognitions.
Great. Thank you so much. So as sad as I am to see our staff leave, it is nice that we get to celebrate them, that we get the opportunity to do so. And we do have a couple of mid-year retirements, so we are going to celebrate those this evening. And we have one of them whom is with us this evening. So what I'm going to do first is I'm going to read the two resolutions for the two who are unable to join us this evening. And then I'm going to ask Kathy Chuanmo to come up, so while I read her resolution. Because I know Brenda's going to want to take pictures of you. So I will start off with Glenn Graham. He is one of our school counselors. This proclamation regarding Glenn Graham shall be read at the public meeting of the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education on December 7th, 2021. Whereas Glenn Graham was first employed by Wachong Hills Regional High School in 2006 after working as a student assistance counselor in Voorhees, and prior to that, beginning his educational career as a teacher of biology in Phillipsburg, and whereas he has utilized his professional counseling skills in providing guidance and support to students and families on matters related to social and emotional wellness during his tenure at Wachong Hills, and whereas he has successfully presented to incoming freshman students on the transition to high school and evening programs for parents and the community on topics related to the college application process, and whereas he consistently works behind the scenes to support students and families through individual conferences and meetings on matters related to academic advisement and post-secondary preparedness, and whereas he has remained a colleague and a friend to the WHRHS staff and has decided to retire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wachong Hills Regional Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Glenn Graham's 15 years of service and devotion to our school, and wishes him a healthy and happy retirement to pursue his passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. Next, I'm going to move on to Kathy Van Arman, who is a member of our child study team. I just realized, it's all three of our very important student support services personnel that I'm reading retirees, retirement resolutions for this evening. So you have all served a crucial for our students throughout your careers, and I think it has been highlighted even more so in the past year and a half. This proclamation regarding Kathy Van Arman to be read at the public meeting of the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education on December 7th, 2021. Whereas Kathy Van Arman has decided to retire after being a member of our special services department at Wachong Hills Regional High School for 17 years, serving students with disabilities here and in previous school districts for a total of 21 years, and whereas she started her career working as a provider of wraparound behavioral services for students and families in an intermediate unit in Pennsylvania, which inspired her to apply to graduate programs, and whereas she has spent the last 20 years as an exceptional school psychologist whose talent and commitment have enabled her to work with some of the students facing their greatest challenges, and whereas she has served not only as an outstanding role model for all of our students, but also as an active member of the Wachong Hills community, and whereas she has served her profession and the community by her unwavering commitment to show consistency, humor, flexibility, and perseverance for students of all levels. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Kathy Van Arman's 17 years of service and devotion to our school, and wishes her a healthy and happy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. Now I'm going to go up to the podium, and Kathy, if you wouldn't mind joining me, so I can present you with yours. This proclamation regarding Katherine Chuanmo to be read at the public meeting of the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education on December 7th, 2021. Whereas Katherine Chuanmo has decided to retire after being a member of the child study team at Wachong Hills Regional High School for 14 years, serving students with disabilities here and in previous school districts for a total of 19 and a half years, and whereas she started her career as an elementary school art teacher in Fairhaven, New Jersey for four years where she imbued her students with a love of the arts, and whereas she has spent the last 15 years as an exceptional learning disabilities teacher consultant, whose talent and commitment have enabled her to support families with students facing academic challenges, and whereas she has served not only as an outstanding role model for all of our students, but also as an active member of the Wachong Hills community, and whereas she has served her profession and the community by her unwavering commitment to enable students to feel good about themselves, not only as learners, but as contributing members in society. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Katherine Chuanmo's 14 years of service and devotion to our school, and wishes her a healthy and happy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. And Kathy, I just want to say that I will always remember you as one of the first people that I met here, who was so friendly and warm and offered your support in any way that I could need. And the special services suite is not far from my office, so I generally get to see you almost on a daily basis because you are always heading somewhere to see a student or a teacher walking through our halls. So I really appreciate all that you have done to support not only our students, but our staff. And you've been a tremendous member of our community, and we're going to miss you very much.
I just want to say thank you. I've had a really wonderful career here, and it's been a wonderful community to work in, very supportive administration, fantastic teachers to work with, and absolutely wonderful students and families. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I've really had a very fulfilling career here. And I thank you.
So just in appreciation and in our typical celebratory manner, we've got a little bit of cake, or cupcakes, I guess, that we'll share with everyone for a few minutes, and then we'll move on to first opportunity for public commentary before we go back to our normally scheduled agenda.
Every time I get out, they pull me back.
He is really good, actually.
Wow.
Where did your order go?
We're going to get started again. Thank you again for your support of our retiring staff members. We're going to go a little bit out of order and move into our first public comment period to allow students who have attended to speak and be able to get home earlier than ordinarily. The first public comment period is limited to agenda items for the meeting. The second public comment period will be at the end of the meeting and open to any topic. All comments are limited to five minutes. You would remember to state your first and last name and the town that you're from when you speak. And now's the time to come up to the microphone.
My name is Ryan Curran. I live in Wachong, and I'm a junior. E Pluribus Unum. It is a Latin phrase proposed by Ben Franklin, Thomas Jefferson, and John Adams to be the motto for the great seal of the United States. E Pluribus Unum means "out of many, one." It is important that this is emblazoned on every quarter. It was a reminder that this nation was to be unified despite our different faiths and backgrounds. Our founding fathers believed in unity, but they also believed in religious plurality, meaning every individual would have the rights, freedom, and safety to worship their own faith. faith. So important was this to the founding fathers that it formed the first amendment to the Constitution. United States laws would not be based on the Protestant majority, nor would it favor them. Yet somehow, 244 years later, at Wachong Hills Regional High School, it is the only it is only the religious majority who have rights, equity, and inclusion. It is one thing when the board was unaware of the inequities in the school calendar. We can chalk up the inaction to "I didn't know." But now you do know, and you are willfully excluding us and denying us equitable access. The attributes of a warrior are many, including courage and strength. Tonight, many Wachong warriors are here to stand for justice, equity, and inclusion. Grant Eid and Diwali as school holidays. We are here, and we will keep coming to remind you that we may be different, we are one. E Pluribus Unum. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nora Curran, and I'm a freshman from Greenbrook. Once again, Board of Ed, I come here to speak to you about the addition of Muslim and Hindu holidays to the school calendar. I'm here because I don't think the board realizes how their decisions reflect on the students whom they represent. On multiple occasions, when encountering a student from another school, they've had the same response. "Oh, you go to Wachong Hills? Isn't that the racist school?" The level of ignorance shown at this school has come to be the thing it is best known for throughout the state. Students from all over the state know Wachong Hills only as the racist school and nothing else. Instead of Wachong Hills being known for our students' many great achievements, we are known for our ignorance. If these encounters have taught me anything, it is that Wachong Hills has a lot of catching up to do. As a school notoriously known for racism, our main concern should be inclusion and respect for minorities, which is what we are exactly here what we are here today to ask of you. The simple rearrangement of a few school days would go unnoticed, if not celebrated, amongst students. Wachong Hills should be prioritizing fixing our image, as we have already fallen behind. Thank you.
I live in Wachong Hills, and I'm a seventh grade student. Dear Board, fulfill your goals. In the past few days, on the occasion of Thanksgiving, I headed to my teta's or grandma's home. It meant the welcome arrival of endless of an endless train of food: turkey, stuffing, pies, stuffed grape leaves, mashed potatoes, lamb, cranberry pear sauce, and the list goes on and on. Food is my teta's love language, and I'm happy to be the recipient. My grandpa Denny is always waiting for me, too. He has a treasure of adventure and fishing stories to share with us. Teta keeps us supplied with her fresh, out-of-the-oven gate pistachio and walnut cookies while we listen. Eating the tasty snacks eases the fact that my cousins and I are squished together on the couch so we can all fit, and I can barely breathe. I call it the cousin cuddle. Memories of Thanksgiving reminds me of the upcoming Eid and Diwali holidays. Over the past several months, my peers and I, through the Wachong Hills Muslim, Hindu, and Jewish Coalition, have been petitioning the Board of Ed to grant Eid and Diwali as school holidays for students. We made the case that without the ability to celebrate, our families our families felt socially isolated. We presented the stresses and anxiety we feel in missing school for our holidays. We discussed the benefit to the entire community to having these holidays that are celebrated by over three billion people worldwide as a school holiday. We've even done the math. Adding these school holidays only results in one, that's right, one added day per year to the calendar for the next three years. The Board has diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. However, the Board does not see the students petitioning them as worthy of inclusion or inequity. Perhaps I am telling the wrong story, Board of Ed members. This is the other part. My teta, she needs me to come for her holidays. How do I know this? Because her arms search for me to give me a big bear hug that are sweet like marshmallows. My grandpa Denny needs me to visit, too, so I can carry his tackle box when we go fishing. My hilarious and brilliant aunt needs someone to laugh at her jokes. My best friend and cousin Salam needs someone to accompany him on our bike rides around the neighborhood. And my older cousins need someone to pick on. Let's face it, it's not the easiest being the youngest. The pandemic and the isolation that followed just heightened the love for my family and close friends. If there is anything that the that this pandemic taught us and is still teaching us is that social interactions matter, and it's hard when they're taken away from you. Celebrations and parties bring us together as a community. It's what helps us meet new faces and see the ones that we love. And it absolutely breaks my heart when I can't do that. That can create a ripple effect that can hurt the overall well-being of a community. Maybe you heard me wrong that having a day off is just about me, or maybe you haven't heard us at all. It's not just about the Wachong Hills students. Our families and friends are counting on us, too. We contribute to this community as teachers, plumbers, EMTs, doctors, engineers, and more. It's about their mental health and their well-being, too. Please, Wachong Board of Ed, adding these holidays will help our community be happier and more vibrant. And I made a poem. Like Dr. Seuss's Grinch whose small heart grew three sizes that day, we hope the Board will be convinced in some way. To add those school holidays and bring joy upon our faces, we will celebrate with our families and go to the best places. Many nearby towns have done it, and so can you. You have the power to be inclusive, so we are not blue. So we stand before you today to ask you to fulfill your equity presentation and allow us all a celebration with our families and our nation. Run, run, I must. My teta's at the door, arms out and waiting. Please, Board of Ed, do the right thing and grant Eid and Diwali holidays without hesitating. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a junior from Greenbrook, Rohan Nagpal. Last Board of Education meeting, I want to say I was surprised at this decision you guys made, but I really was not. How could I be? None of you guys can relate to me or the rest of us. So how can I blame you? But then I realized, actually, you all can relate to me. Most of us here celebrate holidays specific to our religion and hopefully hold our holidays to a strong level of importance. Let's use Christmas as an example. If any of you here celebrate Christmas, I'm sure you enjoy waking up in the morning with your family and opening presents, eating a nice lunch or dinner, and spending time with When I wake up on Diwali, my first priority isn't my family. It's not my relatives and how they're going to come over tonight and we're going to celebrate. It's my academics and falling behind academically. In prior years, all I was thinking about was the math test I had third period or the essay I have to write after school. Luckily, you guys came up with a solution for this. No tests and quizzes on religious holidays. Most people would think this is good, but in reality, it's not. What's the point in that? What does this tell me? You're not as important as us, but sure, we'll give you some leeway. Does it mean my religion isn't as important as you? Is your religion? Does it mean I'm not as important as you? To be honest with you all, it's quite disappointing. The fact that I have to come to every meeting and try and prove to you that I am equal to you is disappointing. Thank you.
A few nights ago, I had the privilege of hearing Kizzar Khan speak. His name, like to many Americans, was one that was not familiar to me. He rose to national prominence a few years ago when the story of his son, Captain Hume Yun Khan, was told on the national stage. It is worth retelling as it was told then. If you want to see the best of America, you need look no further than Army Captain Hume Yun Khan. As a small child, he moved with his family to America, settling in Maryland. He graduated from the University of Virginia with the hopes of one day becoming a lawyer like his father. But first, he felt a duty to serve his country, so he enlisted in the army. One day, while serving in a military base in Iraq, a suspicious vehicle would approach the gates of his base. Captain Hume Yun Khan told his unit to step back while he went forward to investigate. It would be ten steps before the car exploded. Captain Hume Yun Khan saved the lives of his entire unit by sacrificing his own. We still wonder what made him take those ten steps. Kizzar Khan, his father, had said, "Maybe that's the point," where all the values, all the service to country, all the things he learned in this country kicked in. It was those values that made him take those ten steps. He was posthumously awarded the Bronze Star and Purple Heart for his courage. He is the best of America. Captain Khan is a Muslim American, and he died at the young age of 27. Captain Khan's story is so powerful. What can we learn from his story? A young man who was seeking to serve his country not because he had to, but because he wanted to. He acted without prejudice, for he felt this was his America, too. He saw a generous America. Here at Wachong Hills, however, the students are told, after months of petitioning by the Board, that we are sorry the pie is not big enough to share because we've arbitrarily decided so. The students who are asking for inclusion and equity will one day no longer be students at Wachong Hills. What values are we imparting to them as minorities, but also to those in the majority? Is it that you only get equitable access if you are in the majority? That is what you are saying by denying them equity, denying them inclusion. You are saying that you are not part of the fabric of this community. One day, these students who sit here before you might hold the scalpel of a surgeon, the keyboard of a coder, or the drafting pen of an engineer. What world do you want them to create? One that is petty, driven by self-interest and fear? Or one that imagines possibilities of a selfless, generous world? And what would you say, Board of Ed, if 14-year-old Hume Yun Khan was standing before you, asking for a day, one day, to celebrate his holiday? A child who 13 years later would be willing to sacrifice his life for his brigade? What would you say to him? Dear Board, honor Captain Hume Yun's sacrifice and the sacrifice of so many others. Honor your promise of equity and inclusion and grant the students Eid and Diwali off. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward for this first opportunity? Seeing none, we'll close the first opportunity for public comment, and we'll move back into our regular agenda on recognition. If there are folks who would like to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you'd like to leave, this is a good time to leave.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but since your name was in the student report, I figured, congratulations. Of course.
Well, thanks, you're welcome.
You're welcome. Okay, so before I read these two resolutions, I just want to say a few words about Barry and Greg. So you are actually the last two standing on the board that hired me. So you-
And how dramatically we fall.
And, you know, you have both been, I think, I'm sure, you know, the board members will echo these sentiments as they speak about you, but you both have been tremendously supportive. You have both been tremendous mentors to me as I grew into this role, when I came onto the board. And when I look at what we've been able to accomplish as a district throughout the nine years here, it's absolutely 100% because of the support of the board. And you were, you know, really a part of the beginning of our first strategic plan. You know, Peter and Bob came on right after I had come on. And so it's actually nice that there are layers to the board, so that it's not that, you know, the whole board changes at once, but we have, you know, a nice transition of people who, you know, folks who've been here, and as they leave, there's, you know, folks then who've been here for almost just as long. And so it's nice to build upon the leadership that you guys established. But I personally, I really want to thank you because you have been tremendously supportive. And by that, I don't mean that, you know, we've always agreed on everything and you've agreed with everything. I've put forward, you've challenged me to really think about doing, you know, about the decisions that I've made and the decisions I've brought to you and to always do what's best for students. And the one thing that I tell people when they ask about the board is that our board is 100% about doing what's right for students. And that in every decision you make, regardless of what town you're from, of what your, you know, personal expertise or interest might be, that that is what you always stand by with every decision. And, you know, the two of you certainly embody that. And we've been able to really accomplish a lot as a district and move the needle because of that. We have a lot of work to do still, and I, but I think we've gotten better at finding what our areas of weakness are and our areas in need of intention and being less afraid to, you know, be transparent about them and speak publicly about them so that we can address them. And so I really appreciate that because I think the board has made it, has really made it okay to do that. Because, you know, we want to really look at, we want to celebrate our strengths, but we also want to be able to identify what our areas of growth are. And I think, you know, you've helped me do that for myself personally in my own professional areas as well. So thank you for that. You are going to be tremendously missed on the board. These are really going to be giant shoes to fill. So I, you know, it's, we're going to certainly feel your absence, but I think you've left a mark, an indelible mark, on the district and the board. So thank you for that. So I'll read your resolutions, and then I'm sure everyone else has things that they would like to say as well, so.
Unless you want to get out early.
This proclamation regarding Barry Huntsinger shall be read at the public meeting of the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education on December 7, 2021. Whereas Barry Huntsinger has served the Wachong Hills Regional High School District as an outstanding board member for nine years, and whereas he has served on many committees during his tenure, sharing his expertise and insights in the areas of co-curricular technology, education, and operations, and served with distinction as the Chair of the Technology Committee. He has also served on the Alternative Finance, Strategic Plan, and Regionalization ad hoc committees. And whereas he has worked tirelessly for our students with his every decision oriented toward giving students the best possible academic, athletic, and co-curricular experience, he constantly looked towards the future to foster creativity, growth, and success for our students. And whereas he has continuously supported the hiring of outstanding administrators, teachers, guidance counselors, and support staff. He was instrumental in passing three referendums, improving our infrastructure and student environment, and has been a part of many developments at WHRHS, from the creation of the Music Tech Lab, renovation of the Culinary Arts Room, the addition of smart boards and one-to-one Chromebooks, and the newly renovated Learning Commons. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education extends a heartfelt thank you to Barry Huntsinger for his years of devoted service to our school district and wishes him the very best and continued success in his future endeavors.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, well. So I never planned on running for the board. It wasn't one of my goals in life. And then I got a phone call from Sandy Fechner. And Sandy said that her and Fran had been talking. And they thought that, her and Dr. Strompkins, thought that I would be a good addition to the board. So I, I don't know. I thought about it and I said, okay, so I did. And oddly enough, nobody ran against me that I know of. So.
Barry, you're very intimidating.
So when I got on the board, about what, a month and a half, two months later, Fran announced her retirement. I was like, wow, that's odd. And then I was put on the committee to help select our new superintendent. So if you wonder how we got Liz, that's one of the reasons. Well, no, we had a committee. But, you know, I have to say, you shined, you outshined all the other candidates with your vision, what your knowledge of Watchung Hills was and your vision for Watchung Hills. And of course, your resume was like, spot on. So that's how we wound up here. And, you know, because I'm such a techno nerd, that's when I said, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? And so we've had great boards. I mean, I think this might be one of the best we've had because we're all in that boat, rowing in the exact same direction. And so we have a great superintendent. We have a great BA, whose default answer is always no. And we have a Director of HR that's phenomenal and who can step up and be the superintendent when we needed her to be. And I think all of you as board members bring so much knowledge and experience to this board that I only see things getting better and better and better. I mean, you know, we have what, three lawyers now? We have a doctor? I mean, so it just goes on and on. Someone who's a music specialist. So I think this, this board is going to move forward really well and this school is going to continue to go well. Right up to the top.
Ready for the next one? All right. This proclamation regarding Gregory Shabelski shall be read at the public meeting of the Watchung Hills Regional High School Board of Education on December 7, 2021. Whereas Gregory Shabelski has served the Watchung Hills Regional High School District as an outstanding board member for nine years. Since his appointment in 2013, he has served as the Board President for two years and Vice President for four years. And whereas he has served on many committees during his tenure, sharing his expertise and insights in the areas of operations, curriculum, buildings and grounds and negotiations, and served with distinction as the Chair of the Operations and Negotiations Committees. Through the committees, he shared his extensive knowledge, expertise and insights to foster creativity, growth and success for our students. Whereas he has worked tirelessly for our students with his every decision oriented toward giving students the best possible academic, athletic and co-curricular experience. He proudly worked towards student enrichment in the arts, world language, science and many other programs. And whereas he has continuously supported the hiring of outstanding administrators, teachers, guidance counselors and support staff. He was instrumental in passing three referendums, improving our infrastructure and student environment and has been a part of many developments at WHRHS from the creation of the Music Tech Lab, renovation of the Culinary Arts Room, the addition of smart boards and one-to-one Chromebooks and the newly renovated Learning Commons. Now therefore be it resolved that the Watchung Hills Regional High School Board of Education extends a heartfelt thank you to Gregory Shabelski for his years of devoted service to our school district and wishes him the very best and continued success in his future endeavors. There you are.
I think Barry said it all. And I think the most important thing is that we all have worked together. It's really been a privilege to work with all of you who are, I think, very devoted, not to self-interest, but to the best outcome for our students and our community. I'm very appreciative for it. I think our schools are in the best of hands with all of you at the helm. Hopefully you can mentor our incoming to board members to continue to row in the same direction and follow suit. And I think our jobs are made a whole lot easier by our administration, Liz, Tim, Beth, overseeing a large group of administrators and faculty who really make it a pleasure to serve. So I'm very appreciative for myself personally. I will miss this group of people. You've really been a big part of my life over the past nearly decade. But it's time to move on and let some new people learn the ropes and carry on. So thank you very much for your support over the years.
I'd like to just thank you both for being here and especially being here last year. When I had the opportunity to be the President during a lot of the COVID problems we were having and the support from both of you and all the board was tremendous. So nobody, you know, nobody gave me credit. None of you. So it was, it was, that was, that's what I think was very significant because it could have went so many different ways.
No, you did a great job.
Thank you, but this isn't about me. Why, why don't you say? You could talk to me next year when I retire.
So Barry, I just wanted to say, as a fellow former Watchungite, I looked, you were so approachable when I joined the board three years ago and friendly. And I will miss your technical expertise and technology. And I always liked how you approached every time we talked about approving something technology-wise. You were always questioned it and challenged it. And I really felt like you were the guy who knew that stuff. So I will miss that. And Greg, I think you exemplify when we talk about giving of your own time. For anybody who thinks they can't do it because they're too busy. This man is a surgeon. He's raised six children and all of whom are very accomplished. And all you do, being on the board for how many? 16 years total between the two? And President for like half the time? Nobody should ever say they don't have time to give when this man gives the time and has the kind of life he has. So I will, I will miss both of you very much.
Just don't sleep. Yeah. I was gonna say, I don't think Greg actually sleeps.
Well, I'll pile on. You know, certainly, you know, Barry, it's been a pleasure working with you, particularly in, you know, alternative financing, which was a lot of fun. And operations where, you know, your technological expertise, you know, really shined and really helped us as a district as we move forward. And in addition to that, your passionate support for our extracurricular programs and your visible support of our athletic programs and, you know, the football program and being out there and cheering the kids on and, you know, helping, you know, our coaches in, with guidance as they are onboarding and making transitions in here. I think that that has been phenomenal. You've certainly represented your community well, but you've represented all of our community as well in that service. And Greg, I had the benefit of having you as a board member when my kids were in the Warren District. The first time I met Greg was at a middle school band concert. Whereas board member, he was there also as a father. But I remember him at the end of the concert going up and congratulating my son for some strange reason. And it's just, he introduced himself and he said, hey, you did a great job. And so I then went and introduced myself to Greg. And I just thought it was so neat that a board member would take the time to congratulate a student, you know, at a middle school concert. I just, that, that told me a lot about who you were. And certainly as I became interested in being on the board and then serving on the board, you provided great mentorship over the years. And, you know, I can't, I could go on and on and I won't, but I, I will just say that I'm very grateful to you for your service to our community for the 16 years, for your service to this board. And I'm certainly grateful for all the time and counseling you took in mentoring me into my position here. And for that, I'm forever grateful to you. So thank you.
Don't feel like you have.
No, I was just gonna say, because I haven't worked with you directly on any committee, but it was a pleasure to serve with both of you. And thank you for your service.
Again, I'm at a slight disadvantage as a relative newbie to the district as well as to the board and not having the, having the COVID situation create the remote board meetings for the first several months. I'm at a slight disadvantage. But I certainly want to second the emotion that I'm hearing from all the fellow board members because I certainly feel that as well. When asked why I joined the board, it was for my passion for students and the betterment of the students. Because to this day, I believe that students are not first. I believe that they are not, you know, that there's others that come before students and it's our job to make sure students are first. With that said, being on the board gave me the opportunity to be with some of the best and the brightest minds and the people who are most passionate about what I feel are the goals and what should be the goals. Leaders lead. We are a bunch of leaders and the two of you exemplify leadership. And that's very important. Guidance, steerage. And again, I've been on other boards and there's a lot of murky water that has to, that you have to navigate through. And it's our job to do that. We are elected officials. It's our responsibility to maintain an even keel, let's say, and to maintain the goals. And I think the two of you exemplify that and others as well. And I'm gonna, I'm taking notes. So next year, whoever retires, I'm gonna probably say the same thing. So as most of you know and sense it, but you maybe not realize, the person you sit next to is very important because that's the person you get to kibits with. And there's always the sidebar and there's the side comments. I was noticing Peter and Bob with a few comments because it's just natural because you need someone to just say things. So Barry and I would have, you know, you know, some dialogue and it's just excellent. So I appreciate that, Barry. Greg, I definitely want to thank you publicly. Again, I had a personal issue. Greg was there. He helped me with that personal issue with my family. So I certainly appreciate your time and things are working out great. And the other thing is, for me, working with people is one thing, but becoming friends with people, that's another thing. And my goal always is that the people I work with, even though you're going to be moving on, I make it an effort to maintain that relationship and that friendship. Because in my mind, it shouldn't just end just because the board and our board business ends. The two of you are also great people, not just board members. And that should not be forgotten. And I take great pleasure in that and calling you my friend. So again, thank you. And I did all the comments, you know, the service. And, you know, the public should appreciate that because, again, like Susan says, you know, we give of our time. That's all we have. We're all busy. We have regular lives and, you know, you know, I hate to use the word that we sacrifice because it isn't, you know, it's a pleasure. Because if we don't want to do it, we wouldn't do it. You know, we're not paid, but we want to do and we feel it's the right thing to give back to the community. So I appreciate that. So that's all I really have to say. So I thank both two of you. And I'm sure you both will probably miss it. And just like Peter came back on a year later, you may both run again and we may see you again. So, and I would welcome that. So, but both of you, good luck with whatever you choose to do on your Tuesday nights. Thank you.
So briefly, Barry, I feel that we share a certain kinship having grown up in the area together, the Watchung Lake and the Legend of Watchung painting from Sears. But your love of the community. I said, we share those, that affinity. Your love of the community really has shown through with your board service. So thank you very much. And Greg, so much thanks for the support last year with open the school, close the school, half a day, full day. You know, your leadership and your knowledge and skills in managing those situations as well as the waiting room on Zoom and all of that is greatly appreciated. So thank you both very much.
Time to move on to committee reports.
Anybody else want more cake?
Greg, just before committee reports, is a habit we used to have at the K-8 board, which you remember, which we, we would actually vote for these resolutions for retirees. It's something we've never done on this board. I would like to, if I may, move the approval of the five resolutions that were read tonight. And I, it's a voice vote. I think that's all we need.
Yeah.
One favor?
Aye.
Well, let's move on to our Education Committee report.
So the Education Committee met on December 1st. On the agenda for tonight are some policies, mandated policies, 5460.02 and 2425. These are on agenda for first reading, so I'm not going to go through them, labor the points just to remind everyone that these are Peter's favorite types of policies and that they are mandatory, mandated policies that we need to put in place. Regarding the calendar, I'm not going to rehash what Dr. Jewett discussed regarding the calendar. However, part of our discussion really focused on the homework zone or homework-free zone days and really spending some time understanding all of the various holidays impacts and how the schedule would work out so that not only is the day itself homework-free, but that the students are not coming back the next day after the holiday into, you know, an onslaught of tests and quizzes and other things. So looking at what are those homework-free zones around the holidays is something that the, Mr. Librera, as well as the administration and supervisors are working on. And I think that, as I understand it, we'll have a more fuller, fuller report regarding their look at this in January. The, we also got an update from Mrs. Phelan regarding the ARP funding, the use of the American Rescue Plan funding for our, you know, largely around our Empower Program. This is the program that we put in place to help identify students that may be falling behind and then have extra support services available to, for them as well as to provide support for folks that would walk in, you know, as well. So it wasn't just for those that have been identified, but other students that may have, have been identified as, or other students who have self-identified as needing some extra help. This, this program is in place for them as well. We also discussed the Hour of Code, that there will be two days in December for students to take advantage of the Hour of Code. It's open to all students who are interested and is offered during the free period, lunch or after school. It provides an environment to introduce some of our students to the concepts of computer programming. Additionally, Mr. Librera updated the committee that our partnership with US2CARE is for our diversity, equity and inclusion program is coming to an end. I believe that the last program with them was last Friday, if I'm not mistaken.
We still have, we have this week, I think, right?
Okay, so it's, it's wrapping up right now. And that he, they're looking at what the next steps will be and will provide the committee with an update once those next steps are finalized. So that is, that completes our report. I'd offer committee members any due I'd offer committee members any additional comments or elaborate on things. Maybe I overlooked. And any questions from other board members?
Yeah, Dr. Jewett or maybe Dr. Phelan, talking about the Esser Program, the Empower, could you just remind us, how many students and teachers got involved at the beginning and has it expanded? And how many are being served now? And do we expect it to continue?
I'm like the student now, trying to leave from my phone. So, now I have this information in here. So we, the, so the Empower Program, we have a couple of support programs that we had talked about at the last meeting. This one is the, it's a, it's almost an alternative high school program for students during certain periods of the day. So we have one full-time teacher that we hired for this program, who's actually dual-certified in English and Special Education, who left a job where they were an English teacher because they were so attracted to serving this program and, and the students most in need. And then we also have one of our math teachers pushing into the program as well. And we have students in there, for the most part, for credit recovery, rather than, you know, so if they, we had students who struggled quite a bit during the very non-traditional, turbulent schedule over the past year and a half of, of not being here, being here sometimes. And so we've had this need in years that aren't following a pandemic, where we've had a, you know, a hybrid instructional model, as well as some students who have been 100% virtual. But the Esser ARP funds gave us the, the funds to be able to start a program like this. And we had talked to the board where, we actually have it in the Esser ARP grant. Did we end up putting it in there for three years, Tim, or two?
We, yeah, we tried to.
So we put two years in, so we're guaranteed that we'll be able to run it out of that money for the next two years. And then the plan would be if it's successful, we will probably talk to the board about getting it into the general operating budget. I believe there are 28 students that we've identified that are in the program. And, let me just see if I can find this information. And it's in various subject areas. We're using an online provider, Edge Annuity, but knowing that if a student already, you know, struggled in a course, telling them to just, okay, you know, make up for it online, that we certainly know that these students need more support than that. However, as we didn't have teachers certified in every subject area that we could use to oversee this program, we identified, we thought that having an English-certified teacher, obviously, you know, that, that being one of the most crucial subjects, to oversee the program, so that they can actually teach the English course, the course part of it, and then they can support the students doing the other courses via Edge Annuity. But then for math, we also have a certified math teacher that is supporting the students for math. So in terms of, just find the other questions you asked. Okay, so we have 15 individual, individual students who make up the 28 seats that are filled, because some of the students might be in it for more than one section throughout the day. And we also have a supplemental section for ELL, as well as general support for students, you know, study skills and assistance with homework and those types of things. That's separate from the after-school tutoring that we have set up, the after-school support in the Learning Commons that we have teachers here every day. And that is open. We do have certain students who we've reached out to that we want them to come and have encouraged them to come and identified them, that it would be appropriate for them, but it is open to any student who wants to come and get additional support. And so far, both programs are going very, very well. And, and actually, what I'm going to share with the Ed Committee and with the board, the, our Director of Counseling, Jason Sabino, had recently met with Daniel Scanlon, who is the, the teacher, the main teacher overseeing the Empower Program. And some of the stories of these students are very compelling in terms of the gains that they've already made. And so Mr. Sabino actually asked me if I'd like him to share those with me, to share with the board, and so he's going to do that. So I'll be able to, to give you some follow-up from the students on their feedback on, on how it's making a difference. For some of these students, just the fact that they're actually coming to school is a huge accomplishment and, and achievement, you know, from, from the past. So that's the first step, is actually getting them here and then making sure that they can get the support they need in these classes to hopefully graduate on time, is then, you know, the next step.
Thank, thank you for that level of detail. I appreciate it. The other question I had is, the US Two Cares Program, I take it, they've been helping us put on some sort of presentations?
Yeah, and I'll actually let Ms. Scheiderman speak about the current PD, kind of the last piece of our contract with them that we're finishing out.
That goes in PD.
We, it was supposed, it was supposed to be finished, we had set up this contract with them pre-COVID pandemic and all, and the change to the schedule, so that, so this was actually supposed to initially be completed at the end of last year, but because of, obviously, everything going on, we had bumped some of the things to, to adjust the timeline a bit. So I'll let Ms. Scheiderman expand on that.
And so, and just before you do that, and so with this ending, we'll be looking either at them or with someone else to provide similar sort of services?
Right. It's aligned with the strategic plan, with one of the goals, so that there's an action team to, to address that going forward. So we are wrapping up right now with programs that are aligned with students and faculty. So the students and of course their families are invited to the evening webinars. Faculty members are attending the evening webinar as well, and then they have a follow-up session, because it's creating leadership within the district. So then, Usquare Consulting works with the faculty to be able to repeat those webinar presentations and continue the work with the students. So that's the point we're at now with, with them. And that would wrap up the contract.
Any other questions for Bob or the committee? Thank you. We'll move on to personnel. Rita?
Personnel met on December 1st, and we previewed the C items, which are on the agenda. And then we went over policies, which, as Bob said, are basically mandated policies that we're having changes made because of certain types of statutory changes that have been made in the laws. So they're not really substantive changes, they're wording changes, and they're on for first reading tonight. That's it.
As the Operations Committee met on December 2nd, initially, we went over a budget update from Mr. Styes. We, our architects have a good history with us of providing us with estimates of various projects that go out to bid, and, and they've been quite good at predicting things. However, whether it's supply chain problems or the amount of work that's being done at schools now, the bids are, bids are coming in at higher than expected prices. So we got two, two recent bids, one for the gym floor, what's that, from five, six?
Three, four.
Three, four, excuse me. That floor came in a little, maybe $50,000 higher. The other thing, a little bit more concerning, I think, is the, the ESIP HVAC and electric program came in substantially over the estimate. So we may have to look at exactly what we're gonna be able to include in that. More on that to come. No decisions tonight on anything. We also had a discussion about the RFP process for, for the various professional services that we engage. That includes architects, auditors, legal counsel, bond counsel, and, as well as health insurance, and we're looking also at doing property and casualty insurance brokers. It's been a while since, since we've, we've done some of these, so we're gonna be, the Operations Committee is recommending that we go ahead and do an RFP process for the auditors. It's not that we necessarily expect that there will be any change, but it, it is good board practice to make them come in and give us their proposals every few years. And it's been a while, so we're gonna try and do the auditors in the next few months and then sort of at the end of this coming year, do the casualty and property insurance brokers, which hasn't been done in, well, I don't know that we've ever actually done that in the past, but we want to. We too spoke about policy updates that are just thrilling. And I got a double dose of it, because I, I also sit on the Somerset County Ed Services Board and adopted some of these same policies there and voted against them there, too.
At least we know you're consistent.
But these have to do with, with some of the federal regulations that, that now require that boards have policies having to do with how they spend federal money that they get. All this Esser money and some of the others is federal money, so we now fall within that ambit. Then the most significant part of the meeting was the discussion of project graduation and the correspondence that we not only received, but was also in our packet tonight. You know, we, we had previously had a brief discussion about project graduation. Tim gave one of his knee-jerk, no, he doesn't want to do that, to, to going forward with another proj, not with this project graduation, but the one after that. And, and we got, that correspondence was from the PTO president, talking about the program. And she also, as you can see in, in the material, gave us a, sort of a frequently asked questions about project graduation. Project graduation got started around the time, maybe a year or two before my daughter graduated, way back in 2007 here, and was viewed by parents then as a great way to have the kids out doing something other than running from town to town, partying on graduation night. And the Operations Committee had a discussion. We think that that, that goal can still be served. Tim did reach out to both our counsel and to our insurance broker. There are a few things that we can do, adopting things that might make it slightly less likely that we would be sued if something terrible were to happen on a project graduation night. And the Operations Committee is recommending that we do those things, but that we keep track going forward. You know, we gotta figure that over the last four or five years, there's still about 75% participation in project graduation. Going forward, we want to keep track of that from year to year to see if it does trend up or down, one way or the other. But generally, the members of the Operations Committee support continuing to support project graduation. Questions?
Project graduation's not our event.
You are right. I did not have my microphone on, and I happen to know that the people on YouTube would not have been able to hear me, because I watched part of the last meeting on YouTube and could not hear what anybody was saying.
My condolences for you watching that meeting.
That's all right. So again, so, all right, so PG is not our event.
So that's where this all came up, is, you know, how do we make sure that it's clear that it's not our event? Because they're no longer our students, we don't oversee it, we have no control over it.
Oh, because they've already graduated?
And we don't run the event. We don't, we're not at the event.
We just make a donation, Mike, to the parents who run it as a separate event, not at Watchung Hills.
Do we run the proms?
Yes, those are our events.
They are.
They're our staff, our, our staff's involved.
We're overseeing them, we supervise them.
The, the attorneys and, our attorney and insurance broker just suggested to, obviously, distance ourselves, in other words, it's not our event, make, make it clear that it's not our event. And also make, try to get, get them to have their own, the project grad folks to have their own insurance policies, if they don't. And our insurance broker can facilitate that, perhaps give them a cheaper rate and make it easier for them to do that. But that, that was one of the suggestions they made. And, you know, again, just, just making sure we're separate from that event. It's not, it's not the board's event, it's project grad's event.
Just to clarify, Peter, you mentioned that we contribute something to it. What's the level of contribution?
Year, year, for about the last seven or eight years, $17,000 out of basically parking fees that we collect from students, which is not all of the parking fees, but it's a large portion of them, is the amount that we've contributed year after year to project graduation.
Right. And theoretically, we collect them from seniors, okay, who are the ones?
The only reason why I ask that question, because I understand the concern about liability, I concern about it not being our event. One of these things, it says that it's about $50,000 a year for this, for the PG. If we were to donate $50,000, we'd be hard-pressed to say it's not our event, because we're funding the entire thing. So now that I'm hearing 17,000, and I don't know what the right number is, is whether or not that number meets some sort of threshold to say, hey, even though you don't control the event, you're funding the event, it's something that maybe we need to think about or talk about more and figure something. Just a concern, I'm, I don't know the answer, it's just a concern.
I think, I think that's right. I mean, there is, the other part of the funding is directly by the project graduations, as far as I recall from being involved in it before. So they have, like, I know I have to go to a paint and sit, sit next month, I've been, I've been ordered to, to make my donation.
No, I, I don't, I don't disagree. If the budget's 60,000 and we're contributing 50,000, then it can be perceived as, you know, not, well, A, we endorse it, because we think it's a good idea, because it's a safe, sound, good environment for the children, for the students, but we're funding it, to a large part. That's the only reason I bring it up.
Yeah, and I, and I think, Michael, that, that was the reason Tim got, and we asked for recommendations from, both from board counsel and from the insurance broker. And, you know, as we lawyers know, anybody can be sued for anything, but the, especially our board counsel has recommended steps we take to lessen the likelihood that we be held liable for doing that.
Any other questions or comments?
I thought in the Operations Committee minutes, you talked about the policy 8550, the one about the school lunch money, the school lunch balances. That kind of hit a nerve with me. If you read the whole policy, it's absolutely heartbreaking that any of those ramifications for kids anywhere take place when their lunch balance hits zero and they try to buy a lunch. So I just wanted to clarify, what our, our policy is that if a lunch balance goes below $5, negative $5, then there are sort of, kids are cut off from charging lunches? That's the impression I had from the Operations.
Yeah, that is, that's been our practice, yes.
Okay, so that's like a practice, not a policy? Because a policy, you said, the polit, that doesn't exactly follow with what the policy is. The policy said that they get one meal, and then I guess they're cut off, but it also goes on to say, if they get fi, if they accumulate five meals below, if they, if they can't, if they somehow have an outstanding balance equal to five meals, then the principal gets involved and checks to see if maybe they would qualify for a free or reduced lunch program?
Yeah, that's the policy. But, I mean, in practice, we, we were involved with that well before that occurred.
Okay, that's what, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that, this is mandated language from the legislature, but I mean, when, when we see an issue, we, we do immediately go to the free and reduced lunch and make sure the parent is aware of, of the resources they have, that we, that can be provided.
That's why I'm asking the question, because we did talk about this earlier in the year when we were considering the free lunch program. And we had said that we would make sure that everybody who might qualify for a free or reduced lunch would be made aware of it, and I just wanted to ask the question, is that happening? I thought if, if we're implementing a new policy, that might be a good time to have a plan to make sure that people are aware of what they may be entitled to.
Our folks have done a real nice job with that. I mean, I think our numbers are up.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, they're, they're up, so we, we've qualified for that semi. So that, and this is the first time since I've been here that that happened.
Wow.
Yeah, so our numbers have definitely gone up, and I do, there's been some communication. I do know our Director of Guidance is very proactive in assisting students. I much appreciate what he's doing.
Okay.
He makes my life easier, so.
No, that's great to know.
Yeah.
I have a question, not related to the meals, but it triggered a thought. Do we still have yearbooks?
Still have yearbooks?
Yeah, they still, okay. I imagine there are families that can't afford the yearbooks. Do we have some sort of program in place that subsidize, or we pay for yearbooks? Does that exist at all? Is that a thought?
Pretty much our board has any of these things, yearbooks, trips, when they're, particularly with they're on the free and reduced lunch, or if they have other circumstances, we do subsidize.
Okay, good.
And Project Graduation does too.
And I think the booster clothes, memory serves, they've always done that as well.
Any other questions? We'll circle to Bob, regionalization.
Thank you, Dr. Chabelski. So the regionalization ad hoc committee met last week. In your folder, you will see a draft of the project narrative for our application. We reviewed the application during the meeting and started to draft the summary narrative that is in your box, as well as review some of the other steps that we need to go through in order for us to meet a January 15th application deadline, which we are targeting for. We also had some questions for Mark Maguire, as far as the timing of the legislation being finalized. He assured us that the governor, or that the legislation would be passed through the legislature by the 20th. It does not need to go back to the governor, because the governor provided a conditional veto, and if the Assembly and Legislature meet the conditions, then it becomes law. So we're just waiting for it to have the final passage, which they expect on or before the 20th. In addition, the Department of Community Affairs is aware of our application and expecting, you know, our application to come through as a single entity application, and so there's no issues with us being a single entity applicant, which there's been some discussion whether or not that was possible, but that has been clarified for us once and for all. And then the only outstanding issue is looking at the assigning of consultants, and whether that's a process that we will be running ourselves, or whether that's a process that we will be running in conjunction with Rutgers University, who may or may not be a centralized entity to handle all of the consultants for all of the various regionalization feasibility studies that will go on. Just real quickly on the narrative, the objectives of the study are going to be to review the impact of combined school district would have on curriculum, instruction, and scheduling for all students, the impact on special education, the impact on co-curricular and extracurricular activities for all students, to determine the demographic impact a regionalized district would have on student population, which is a requirement of the legislation, to analyze the debts each district, of each district, and determine the potential impact on K-12 regionalization would have on taxpayers for each of the participating municipality, in addition to other economic benefits, the potential impact on transportation, the impact on collective bargaining agreements in each districts, including recommendations on how to best combine guides in a manner that is equitable to the majority of members, including the impact of shared staffing, the impact on health insurance, and to outline the use of existing district assets in a regionalized district, meaning cross utilization of existing resources amongst the communities. Those are the current goals that we have in place, they're going to be flushed out a little bit more. Dr. Jewitt is going to be speaking with the sending district superintendents about what our objectives are, and solicit their feedback, even though they're not necessarily participating, we still want to work with them in a cooperative manner and get their feedback, you know, to this process. So at this point in time, it is full steam ahead. I will also add to this that Mr. Styes has been in conversations with Nick Brown down, who is the business administrator down in Pinelands, who has recently gone through this process and released their feasibility study. He has been very cooperative in working with Mr. Styes, has sent him lots of information, and has had several conversations with them, so they're helping guide us in this application process. But, you know, I think that we're in good standing as we work our way toward that January 15th deadline to submit the application.
Thanks.
Is there any changes that can be made to it?
I know that adjustments can be made, you know, it's kind of the framework for, you know, the work itself, but I think any adjustments, we would just have to go through the process of making sure DCA is aware of it and that they approve of those adjustments.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Bob, I apologize for missing the meeting, but reading through the narrative, one question I had was, because it's written in terms of combining all five districts into one district, does this preclude having the consultants report to look at various other combinations?
No, not at all. I mean, I think the, all of our language, you know, ultimately is going to be up to and including regionalization, and as part of that, they're going to look at what could the impact be of shared services, what could the impact be of partial regionalization, where you would have two districts that would combine into, you know, a K-12, and the others would have sending, or three, or four, or any variation of those themes, as well as the idea of where might there be, you know, some positive impact around shared services, whether that's special education, whether that's transportation, whether it's some of these other areas that we've often talked about. So that is certainly supposed to be clear, and if it's not clear, you know, we certainly take your advice and guidance to make sure that it is.
Other questions or comments?
Thanks, everyone, for your hard work on the committees, and looking into next year, I look forward to seeing regionalization come to fruition.
At least a feasibility study.
No, I understand. Doesn't change my statement. We'll move on to board discussion. I thank everybody for our frank discussion last week at our retreat, where we're tweaking our board goals a little bit and prioritizing mental well-being of our, I think it's everyone or just students, did we specify?
Oh, we said it's a student.
So that'll change in our next iteration of board goals that you'll see in next year's agenda, and Bob.
Dr. Chabelski?
Sir.
Just related on that specific point, I want to call everyone's attention to the fact that the Surgeon General released a report today that warns of youth mental health crisis that is coming. It was a very unusual report that he released today, making, you know, basically, you know, codifying a lot of the things that we've been seeing and feeling and thinking about the crisis that was already there before the pandemic, that the pandemic just kind of ignited in a much more significant way. So I think that just kind of reinforces our sensitivity to those issues here in our district.
And the timeliness of that goal.
Absolutely.
Thanks. And Bob already peeked under the packaging and checked his email, and the board self-evaluation that was suggested by Gwen at our board retreat, you may notice in your email that I sent you a parting gift as a gesture. In the New Jersey School Boards Association, your login, you can be, you can easily find the self-evaluation. I gave you a link for the instructions as well, and I'll pass it on to whoever's elected as the next president to work with Gwen to collate that and discuss it at whatever point in time you feel necessary.
Did you give us a deadline?
That's going to be up to the next board president.
No, I think it's two weeks after we get Greg's self-evaluation.
Ouch. Well, maybe I'll do mine tonight. After all, I don't sleep.
You don't have to do your training on December 31st anymore, so you can do the self-email. The goals, by the way, the first two are the same, they're, one of the attachments to the agenda, the third one, I wrote down as the WHHS Board of Education will support student mental health and well-being. I think that's what was suggested at the end of the last meeting, so hopefully that captures, I think, what the board had discussed.
Peter, I would love to hear your voice.
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolutions A1 through A6.
Would anybody like to pull anything for separate discussion or vote?
I mentioned to Dr. Jewitt, to Tim, that for A3, 2422 had a provision that had to do with just sixth to eighth grade.
Yes, and I, so I, what I said to Susan is we can approve it for first read and then move, because that's not a material deletion. No, I'm glad you're bringing that up, I'm glad you caught that, because I tried to catch the things that only apply to elementary or middle school and pulled them out, but I missed that one. So as long as everyone's comfortable with it, well, you can approve it at first read, and then we'll remove it for a second read.
Seeing nothing else, roll call vote. Ms. Barone?
Yes.
Mr. Bernberg? Mr. Fallon?
No, on A3 and A4, yes on everything else.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Sober?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Dr. Chabelski?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolutions A7 and A8.
Have a second?
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss either, or pull either for separate vote? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Ms. Barone?
Yes.
Mr. Bernberg?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Sober?
Yes.
And Dr. Chabelski?
Yes.
On this rare occasion when we have a B item, Mr. President, I'd like to move resolutions B1.
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss this? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Barone?
Yes.
Mr. Bernberg?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Sober?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Dr. Chabelski?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolutions C1 through C12.
Second.
Would anybody like to pull anything for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Ms. Barone?
Yes.
Mr. Bernberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Sober?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Dr. Chabelski?
Yes.
President, I'd like to move resolutions D1 through D3.
Second.
Would anybody like to pull one of these for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Ms. Barone?
Yes.
Mr. Bernberg?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Sober?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Dr. Chabelski?
Yes.
Thank you. This will be the second opportunity for public commentary, and seeing no public, we will close the second opportunity for public commentary. Any other business? Huh? If I may? Gosh, I don't know how to tie break, I was looking.
Oh, I'm sorry, go, no, Peter, go.
We'll go in order of.
I just want to recognize Pearl Harbor, the, you know, 80th anniversary, and thank all those who served before us to make the United States as great as it is, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I disagree going forward with changing our agenda. It also is against Robert's Rules of Order to change our agenda without having a vote of two-thirds of the board to change the agenda. I think it was a mistake to do it tonight, it's done, but going forward, I think that's something the board should keep in mind and have a discussion if you're going to consider changing the agenda again.
So noted. I'm not sure that your statement is accurate, I'd have to look at that, but nonetheless, I took a prerogative, and if you didn't like it, take it up with the next president.
I held fire until this point.
No, I know, I appreciate it.
Just a reminder that the Somerset County School Boards Association meeting is this Thursday, in-person and/or remote. If you're in-person, it's at the Votec, where they serve dinner, if it's remote, and dinner starts at 6:00. If it's remote, you can dial in at 7:00, register at School Boards Association website. The topic for this particular meeting is communicating in challenging times, so should be an interesting discussion on some of the communication challenges that school boards are having, you know, around our state.
I guess it's good that it's a goal for us then, huh?
Any other, other business? Have a second? Thanks, everyone, have a wonderful holiday.
After holidays, everyone.
Yes.
Yeah, it's hard to think that it's over, really.
I know, I know. Right?